It's still good morning, but we can't do anything. Okay, all right, let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, agenda, do we have any additions, corrections to the agenda?
What deletions?
Or deletions, yeah, that too.
I don't have.
That'd be corrections.
Mr. Chair, I don't have anything.
Okay, any mail? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All right, motion by Erica, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Phil. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, minutes of the August 5th meeting, do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I don't think so, but in Highway, I'm just curious, the pup trailers, we just were going to sell those at auction. We didn't, there was no trade-in. It was, I think it was in Sheriff's where we were talking about a possible.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
That was the pup trailer.
No, they're just going to sell them.
I don't have any.
So I had one question, I don't know if it's a correction, under EDA, page three of six, where it says, the motion under EDA where it says county bike partnership, is it a county bike partnership? Because it's, or is it, I mean, I know most of this stuff's going to be used for bike equipment, bike things, but it's for the, it's for stations of stuff like on the Arlen Trail?
That is what it's called.
Was it called that?
Financial.
Okay, all right, I was just, just to clarify, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, that is what they called it when they, I believe that's the letter.
Okay. Okay, does anybody else have anything?
Good job, Peggy.
Yeah, yeah, awesome. I mean, I looked through it twice, I couldn't find anything. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Erica, second by Barry, any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, now we get some good news about our Becker County Drug Court, so please come up, Crystal.
Good morning, council members, I don't know if you remember me, my name is Crystal Cadree. I am the Treatment Court Coordinator for Veterans and Drug Court here in Becker County. I'm also the 7th and 8th District Supervisor for all Treatment Court Coordinators, so I kind of operate in multiple counties as well, working towards implementing new courts. I just kind of wanted to give you just a short, brief update, I know my document that I sent you was a little bit longer, but just for edification, there were two graduates in our drug court in Becker County this year, both secured employment, their driver's license and stable housing, one purchased a home. We've been working on evidence-based incentives, sanctions and service adjustments that reduce recidivism and build long-term stability, so that's another part of what we're working towards with the National Conference, and the national system is doing an updated second edition for best practices in treatment courts, so we're working towards updating our manual and our handbook to align with those best practices. We have an operational tune-up that's scheduled this fall in Clay County with, that's free, that the National Conference will, which is called All Rise, will come for free to help train us and to do a tune-up on these best practices. I just went to one, I just went to one last week with Judge Lawson for the Becker County DWI Court, and I already have ideas percolating in my head. In Veterans Court, we had two graduates this year with significant life changes, having employment, sobriety, housing, community connections. At this point, we don't have any current active participants in Veterans Court, but now we're working with the new Veteran Service Officers to try and discuss some referrals and try and get that moving along again. Some trainings that we have done, so as I mentioned, we did, again, another free training in October for incentive, sanctions and service adjustments, and we made some changes to our incentives, kind of giving a little bit more evidence-based shows that the more you can provide incentives to participants, the more that they are successful, so providing them like motivational stickers, we give them small wristbands when they move phases, obviously, we give them cake, some of you have been to our graduations, we celebrate their graduations or commencements, and those tend to be really uplifting experiences, and we give them a plaque when they graduate. So the Becker County DWI Court Program completed, last week, a tune-up, so hopefully we'll make some, they'll be making some changes as well to their manual and handbook. Statewide, there's a new strategic plan that calls for equal access to treatment courts, that was a two-page-long draft that I have in my documents, unfortunately, it was a draft because when I sent it on Wednesday, it hadn't been approved, as of Thursday, it was approved by the Judicial Council, so now that is part of the strategic plan for treatment courts, and in fact, Judge Lawson was a co-chair for that Strategic Plan Committee for Treatment Courts. The State County Administrator's Office has expanded staff, so I outlined some of those staff members to help support local courts with training, help us with grants, data and any outreach. And just to note what our strategic plan for treatment courts is for the state of Minnesota, we want to expand access, so ensure equitable participation statewide, including some rural and unrepresented communities, there are currently in the 7th District four counties that don't have treatment courts, and so that's one of my goals this year is to expand treatment courts, so we can have equal representation for all in the 7th District. We are working towards then, as like I said, best practices, we want to provide participant-centered services while allowing flexibility for local needs, we want to provide awareness and collaboration, so we want to strengthen our partnerships with justice programs and community partners and increase that public support. Just, so some working plan highlights to note, we are developing a statewide training plan for judges, staff and partners, we're updating a funding formula for the next biennium to better support the existing and new courts, the original biennium, or the original funding formula is quite outdated, and obviously, as we know, funding needs grow, so when that funding formula stays stagnant, that can be kind of difficult. We want to implement statewide performance measures, that's still in a work in progress, and to update those standards that will also align with our national best practices. And again, I think last year I came and said, I'm hoping I'll have that data this year, we're still working towards that, and once that's been approved, I can provide that data to you. We want to create a research framework to identify treatment court policies, and we want to launch a statewide outreach plan and produce an annual report highlighting our successes. I just want to note why the funding, why your funding and why your support matters, treatment courts save county money, counties' money by reducing jail and prison costs. I'm working also with the SCAO team to try and get that data more accurately reflected. Data seems to support back from 2014, it was roughly somewhere between $4,000 per participant that it saved in jail costs, and I think it's really hard to quantify all the things that we don't end up paying for, because we just don't know how that, jail is very easy, we can say, okay, we saved 30 days of jail time, that's how much this, what this person would have cost if they sat 30 days in jail, or prison time, but it's hard to quantify when they get their license, when they get employment, when they maybe get off services, when they don't have their children out of home, that's a really big, those are things that are hard to quantify because we don't have those things. So I'm hoping I can try and figure that information out, so we can get a better amount of what it really saves counties and saves the state, but those are just some of the things, I want you to recognize that those are some quantified things that are hard to figure out, because they're, they're saved costs that we can't quantify. And I just want to also note, continued county investment ensures that the Becker and Clay County Treatment Court Program leaders are successful, that we follow our evidence-based programs that directly strengthen our community. So today, with the successes we've seen in Becker County, and I kind of provided you with some of where our success rates are, of how our graduates have performed, it's clear that these programs save both money and lives, we continue to build on that success and make sure that we don't fall behind as the state continues to expand treatment courts. So myself and Judge Tilmoni, she's on via Zoom, would ask the county to provide that additional support, the investment will directly reduce incarceration costs, strengthen public safety and help more people in our community achieve long-term recovery and stability. And I'm open for any questions or thoughts, or?
Mr. Chair, Crystal, I'm new, I'm a new commissioner, how is this different than probation? How is your program different, it's treatment, doesn't our probation do that as well?
So yes, our probation has become pretty active in this last year by adding on that F5 project, which is an additional resource, we are probably the highest base probation status, you know, we, they're being tested twice, twice a week when they start in the program, they're highly supervised, they have support from treatment providers, so we're a multidisciplinary team that works together in the Treatment Court Program, so it's a high, so with people that are accepted into Treatment Court, they're high risk to reoffend or to be unsuccessful on regular probation, and then they have a lot of high needs, so they typically cover a severe or moderate substance abuse disorder, when it comes to veterans, it's usually some sort of mental health disorder as well that might be allocated with that, that they actually need extra services that probation won't be able to provide, and then we, as a team, work with these participants, the judge sees them every two weeks, once they get later in our phases, we see them monthly, and then once they finally are commenced, we have, then they're able to move out into the community, typically having a longer period of sobriety, they typically are able, they're required to get their driver's license, they get their GED.
But Crystal, are the same people, is there overlap between the probation people and the treatment people, is it the same group of people?
Yep, we have a group of people that are both, we have team members on our team that meet every two weeks, and then we email each other as.
So that's your collaboration with probation people, but are you guys?
Crystal, I think, I think what he's asking is, this, the clientele that you're dealing with, this program keeps them, they can either do traditional and go to jail, most likely, or do the program, I mean, that's, is that clear in some cases?
And in some cases, they may, they may end up not going to prison.
Right. So this, this is.
Might be one of some of those.
It's not your habitual ones, it's your, you know, earlier ones that aren't, you know, I mean, this is people that, that through their, through their resource can say that these, we can probably help these people, so that you're trying to, they're taking these, this group that qualify for this program, that may just otherwise serve their 30 days or serve their, you know, eight months or whatever in jail, and doing this intensive kind of monitoring, and I, and I think, like, like she, like Crystal said, they appear in front of the judge every two weeks, they're tested much more vigorously, they're, they're held accountable for their actions and for, in those short timeframes. I think we've seen here that, obviously by the numbers, it seems to be, seems to be working, I don't know if you want to expand on, is that, is that a fair assessment that these, we're trying to take these people that would probably just be going to jail and have probation afterwards, but this is more intense and, and monitoring, and I think it's maybe taking a little bit from like the tribal, tribal inner circles or the circle treatments that they have, or that they used to have, I know they used to hold people, bring them in their group and hold them accountable and say, these are the people you affect, and this is what happens, but.
The, I know someone that graduated from drug court, and he said that the best thing that he got was, he had people that actually cared about what happened to him, and when you go to jail, they don't feel like that, and so this program is awesome, I mean.
Can.
Thank you.
The success rate is so much better when people feel like they're important.
Crystal, do you have any, like personal, or maybe Judge Tilmoni has, an individual that shared with you that, you know, this really did, I mean, this turned me, is that, have you had any of those personal experience where someone's actually said, this, this probably, you know, and of course with alcoholism, it's always, it's this constant battle, all of a sudden, it's not just, you're fixed, it's, but.
Alcoholism and drugs.
Yeah, so.
I can tell you personally that every single participant that we have, maybe not at their commencement, but at some point, they say, this has changed my life.
Yeah.
But quite, quite frequently, that, that does happen with commencements.
And again.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Oh.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Judge Tilmoni?
I apologize for not being there today, I'm not feeling well, so I didn't want to come in person. On that line and on that question, I wanted to add, just anecdotally, it's just last, two weeks ago, I had a person who was previously in our drug court, and they contacted me through court administration to, and it was, they were done with Treatment Court in 2020, and they contacted me to, they actually came to the courthouse, and I was not there that day, I was out of training, and they wanted to see me and say how, how good they were doing, so, you know, we do have those stories, those individuals who have done a great job and are coming back and wanting to show, you know, be proud of the changes that they've made, and just, you know, for her to check in with me and, you know, tell me all of that, that was just an amazing story, and I have others that I keep in touch with over the years, and so it's really been very successful for many people, so, and so Commissioner Hanson, again, for, as to your question, it is more enhanced supervision, it's, you know, when people are placed on probation in the, in district court, it's a different animal, depending on what type of crime they're there for and their criminal history, that there's a scoring, so to speak, whereas, that shows how often they have to meet with probation, sometimes that's once every three months, so, you know, and that's, that's, those are tested probation principles, and they can speak to that otherwise, but these are individuals who need more intense and, you know, enhanced supervision, and that's why I think that this program is, is better for individuals of that nature.
Thanks Judge Tilmoni, I just also want to add that I think, I think programs like this are really important for those struggling with, whether it's substance abuse or alcohol, because really, they need support, you know, many of them don't have support outside of their support system, are those that they used to use with or drink with, so I think it is important for us to have programs like these, so that we can help them to be successful, and I'm proud to be a part of it, from here, so, thank you.
Mr. Chair, and this is their choice, they choose, they can choose this, it's not, and it's not automatic for everyone, it's not, it's not an option for all, all individuals, so.
Correct.
It's a, I agree, that's a great, great program, and it would be great to have a hundred percent, but we know that's not ever going to be possible when you have a hundred percent non-recidive.
Close enough.
You know what I mean.
Yes.
I'm not a spelling champion either, so.
Mr. Chair, a couple more things, just District 7, is that the legislative District 7, or I see it's just Clay and Becker County, is that the 7th District?
So the 7th District is a judicial branch district, so it's a judicial district, I have, I handle, actually handle 23 counties as part of my supervisory position, but the Clay-Becker program is combined, based on the number and the size in Becker County. Becker County would probably not be able to do a standalone Treatment Court, based on the, the numbers, the funding formula that we have requires about 25 is our average, and Becker County wouldn't, wouldn't get there all by themselves, so that's kind of why we combine with Clay.
Second question, you mentioned mental health, you brought it up, we've talked about alcohol and drug problems, but mental health with our sheriff and our jail, I mean, it's a big issue.
Right.
Is there collaboration you can do with the Sheriff's Department on that kind of?
We do, we collaborate with the sheriff, we'd work on their mental health as another part of it, I can tell you that with our Veterans Program, that is a little bit more more of a higher priority, we're working with the VA, obviously, mental health part of our drug court, mental health is very much a part of it, quite frankly, now, when you go into Treatment Court, or go into Treatment, you would be subject to co-occurring disorders, and so they would also deal with your mental health as an assessment, so we are working on making sure that we have a diagnostic assessment quite quickly, following, once they come into our program, so we are working on both the chemical health and their mental health.
All right, I won't ask any more questions, thank you.
No, that's great, I appreciate it.
Thank you, so we have, we, does anybody, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the?
So moved.
Support for $15,000? So we have a motion by Erica, do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, I'll second for discussion, but this is part of our budgetary items, I don't think we need a motion.
Oh, we don't need a motion, okay.
To, I don't, we just, this is just a report and.
All right, so.
If you want to remove.
Yeah.
I'll remove, withdraw, yeah.
Yep, all right, perfect, sorry.
I mean, this is, yeah, we, I think we just can says, this is a good program, and for that, that amount is a bargain for us, so.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect.
Not saying we want to raise, Judge Tilmoni.
Bargain.
I'm not making that request.
Thank you very much, and thank you for everything you do for all of our people.
Thank you, thank you for your support, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Crystal, thanks Judge Tilmoni.
Yep.
Thank you very much for your support, Commissioners.
All right, let's move on to the consent agenda, is there any items that anybody would like to pull out of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I don't want to pull it, but I would, would like, and maybe during reports, you can maybe expand on the home start, homework start, starts program, MOU.
It's a re.
Renewal.
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 It's, I, Becker County doesn't offer the services, I believe they're just a.
I mean, it just in reports, just give an update on it, and I, just like the.
Yep.
And then I had just one item, I don't want to pull it either, I just want to make a comment on number eight under the, the tables, the tables for the schools, so they're, they were purchased through, this is through the organics grant, and they're going to, they're, they're big, they're steel stainless steel tables, they have sorting, sorting garbage, they have organic garbage can, they have recycling and.
There was a picture in the.
There's a picture, yeah, and it's, I think it's going to work out really well, I mean, it's going to.
Do you have to have your, your products in the triangle shape and the round shape and the box?
You have to make them into a triangle, or they won't fit.
Because they're all, they're shaped, so it's like, how do we make these shape-wise?
I know, I saw, I saw that too.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
All right, do we have, we have a motion by Phil, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second by Barry, any more discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, Commissioners, open forum.
I, I would like to ask a question, do we, I mean, does everyone like, I kind of like the open forum before consent agenda, I, you know, like.
Sure.
I'm all right with it.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
I mean, I don't know, is, I mean, for future, I'm just, is that?
We probably are just following the format that's always.
Yeah, we, I.
Well, we never had a consent agenda, so it.
We could, we could do that.
So there wasn't, I mean, I don't know, I just, it's always been.
Yeah.
Right away, and, I don't know, it just.
I'm good with that, yeah.
I don't know, I just, it kind of liked that, in case there's something on the consent agenda that's being discussed, I don't know.
Yeah, that's good, yeah, I don't have any problem with that, we can, we'll try, let's try it next meeting, and, everybody want to have anybody talking again, boom, forum then, all right, so we have a couple, we have Willis Matson.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, I'd like to speak to the item on the DNR land acquisition, if you will allow comment.
We'll, we'll do, we'd like to do it now, if that's okay, Willis, yeah.
Okay. Is this on?
Green light.
Testing, there we are. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, my name is Willis Matson, 425160 Highway 34, Osage. I'm here to speak in favor of the approval of the DNR's acquisition of the Toad Lake property that was before you as consideration as a county facility some time back, and the Isaac Walton League that I'm representing is the nation's oldest conservation organization, over 100 years old, and has its chapter formed here in Becker County in 1945, and we've always stood for the protection of air, water, land and, and natural resources. As was mentioned during the discussion of the possible acquisition of this property by the county, this parcel is, is unique, and it has features that are warrant its long-term preservation and management. As an ecologist, I can testify to the fact that this piece of property has the most, the highest biological diversity of plants and animals anywhere in the county, and quite frankly, is a rival for anything on the planet, because it sits in the middle of three significant ecological biomes, a prairie, hardwood forest and a boreal forest, and because these three ecosystems are so close together, these, this piece of property has plants and animals on it that are resident of all of those kinds of environments, so if the DNR does in fact succeed in acquiring this property, we're going to work, the Isaac Walton League will work hand in glove with them to identify these kinds of characteristics, protect those and restore the part of the property that was altered when it had visions of becoming a ski resort. So we would hope that the Board recognizes this value, sees that its ownership and, and public ownership and management for these values is important, and would, would support this, this acquisition by the DNR. Further, the property that is proposed for the Wildlife Management Area is, excludes a large portion of the waterfront, it has a portion of it, the undeveloped portion, but as you recall, there's some building structures and whatnot on a, on the land portion, had been proposed that the property become a state park, that would then have a water-based recreation component, and that it would include that property, so we're going to try to work for and hope we would have county support for that kind of a facility that would recognize the waterfront value, addition to the larger piece of property, and so we may be back before you with that kind of proposition if we should be successful. The DNR Parks and Trail people looked at it, but saw the value, did not have the funding available to do that, as I understand it, so we may be looking for special appropriation, something like that, to make that a larger facility that has greater water base and a greater variety of uses for the public, so we encourage you to, to support this, this resolution when it comes before, before you later in the agenda. Thank you for the time to be able to speak in support of this idea.
Thanks, Willis.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, and then also, I believe Clark Lee is online and would like to speak too. Is he on there? I think he's, the phone number on the bottom left, I think.
I see Jessica's online, congratulations Jessica on the big victory over the weekend.
Great, thank you, my name is Clark Lee, 20552 County Road 117, Osage, which is Big Toad Lake, and first of all, Chairman Meyer and fellow Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to appear before you in the open forum via the telephone this morning. I would like to encourage that the resolution that is on page 58 of your packet this morning be adopted. We had a. be adopted. We had a township meeting a week ago last night. Eric Thorson, who is the area wildlife supervisor from Park Rapids, and Commissioner Jepson were there. So Erica would know that, or Erica could confirm that there was unanimous approval of what the DNR is looking at doing with Toad Mountain. The issue of picking up the additional waterfront, if you will, that Willis is talking about, that would be a whole separate issue. This is dealing mainly with, just primarily what what the drawing will show in your packet. But we think that that would be a real positive for the county, for the state, for everything. Willis outlined very well some of the strong advantages of that property, or unique characteristics, I guess I should say. So I would like to encourage the the resolution be passed, and I know that I'm not only speaking about the the atmosphere of the township meeting, but also I've talked to a lot of people on the lake and a lot of people that don't live on the lake as recent as yesterday, and everybody seems to be very much in support of this, instead of it being, as we looked in the past, a county park that could require considerable expense to the Becker County, because it's my understanding that once this has, if it goes through and everything goes as planned, that the the trust buys it, then turns it over to the DNR, the DNR is not only responsible for taking care of it, but that the tax base that we would lose as a county and as a township will be more than replaced. And Commissioner Meyer, you had a word when we talked last night, I can't remember what the word is, but it's not that they pay a tax, they do something else that I think you probably are all aware of. But the bottom line is, there won't be any loss of tax revenue if you pass this resolution. I thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Clark.
Thanks, Clark.
Mr. Chair, just, just to point out something, though, the PILT payment, payment in lieu of taxes, is not a guaranteed dollar. I mean, this is legislatively set either by the state or feds, depending on who you're paid for. Now, I don't see it ever ending, but just in this last governor's proposal, was significantly cut PILT payments. So to say that this is guaranteeing a revenue source for, you know, is is not 100% accurate. But currently it is, and I I don't see it ever going away for these type of pro, this type of land, because there's many different categories of PILT payments, school trust payments, tax forfeit PILT payments, so. But eyes wide open, that's not a guaranteed revenue forever either, so.
Thank, thank you.
All right. So let's move on to reports and correspondence. Who'd like to go first?
I can go.
Oh.
Or go ahead, Barry.
No, go ahead, I
I actually don't have that much to get to, Barry.
Thank you, that was a good
Oh, you're done already?
On the 7th, Kyle and I went to a conference on navigating land use issues, very informative. One of the speakers, there's actually one of the first speakers, was about building a record, the public hearing details, and finding a fact which in our last meeting were very important. So it was really nice to have had what happened last meeting and have it, have the facts of how we're supposed to run the meetings and how we did it. And there's a few details we could have done a little better at, but we did it according, very, we did it very well, of going through the process, I thought anyway, according to the way you're supposed to build your record and and finding a fact. We also talked about data centers. In the far reform this morning, they're building a new data center up there. They talked about
Three billion dollar.
Yeah, three billion dollar data center, yeah. They're, they're, they talk about, there's already statutes in place in Minnesota, but you can be, I think, more restrictive as a county if you want to. But these data centers are coming about, there's, they need significant electrical capacity and
And water, isn't it?
And water, yep. And the reason they like to do them up north is
No rules.
You got eight months of natural cooling.
Except for places like ChatGPT, all your artificial intelligence.
Yeah, this is where these data centers, yeah, are tapping into and coming from. So we also talked about wind and solar, like those kind of plants, and what you should be thinking about as county commissioners. So those were the two big things that came out of that were really, really useful. So thank you for letting me go to that meeting and
Again, the wind and solar, though, they get to a certain point, we don't have any control over them in the state.
That's so big.
Yeah, it's so big.
Then it's Public Utilities Commission.
Okay. I had the RAC on the 11th. We're doing some strategic planning, we're trying to send all our members out to other recreational groups in the counties so that we know what's going on. So if there's areas we can collaborate, you know, just to make sure what's going on. Project 412, we're going to have representation for the the trail study going down to Shoreham and eventually onto Buck's Mills. So we just want to make sure we're represented, we know what's going on. The county, the RAC should be the place where all of that comes together, because we're, the county is is the biggest portion of that, as I see it. So we're setting out priorities and how we're going to go about that, and trying to get that recreational advisory committee up and up and running to a better level than we're at before. Yesterday, we had a joint powers concerning the the extraterritorial thing with, it's actually between Lakeview Township and the city. They've got an agreement drawn up, and it's tentative, but that might be happening, probably will happen here, be signed. The county is kind of complicated, but it'll be a joint powers between the city and the township for a certain area, not the whole two-mile extrateritorial. So complicated issue, if you want to know more, I can let you in on that. That's all I had, Barry.
I can go next, just a couple of things to add to the RAC committee. We we've had, just airing the discussions with a property on Little Sugar Bush Lake that I believe is tax forfeited. So I'll be attending the Sugar Bush, or Sugar Lake Town Bor, Sugar Bush Town Board meeting. I don't know why that was hard for me to say. In December, to discuss the park, it sounds like there's a lot of interest in it becoming a park, that that's an area that a lot of people used to frequent when they were growing up. It sounds like there may be some volunteers to help maintain it, so I'm going to the the town board meeting just to
Know what they want.
No, but, I mean, that's good. Well, it sounds like, yeah, it sounds like they, I learned my lesson.
We've all learned lessons.
I also attended an Osage Township meeting for us to discuss the the west side, or the rest side park, just to see if that is something that they would want to collaborate with the county on. It sounds like they're willing to do it. We also talked about the Heartland Trail going through Osage. Just a reminder, there is a public hearing for the Heartland Trail Study on 8/25 at the Pavilion from 4:30 to 6:30. And as of August 11th, they had 80 comments associated with that study, so that was a good turnout so far. Human Services, just wanted to point out, and I think we've talked a little, I think Carrie sent it out, but there there was question about how much of their budget is payroll, and 60%, 66% of their budget is payroll. As far as the, what was it, homework, the one that was on the consent agenda, that's really
Homework starts with homework.
Homework starts with home, it's it's a homeless prevention organization, I guess, and really, the the county's duty in it is just to make referrals, and I believe that there are funding go through, like, that's, the funding goes through the county, but we don't provide any funding for it. In this area, those services are provided by Mahoobee. So, any other questions?
No, it's it's just how important home life is for
Yes.
Children growing up, I mean
In fact, one of the the meetings, I'm on the planning and planning committee for Mahoobee, and one of the, we talked about homework, and what could we do to improve, that was one of the needs that were identified in their community needs assessment, and I said to get rid of it, because really, kids shouldn't have to sit in school all day and
I think that's, that's kind of the, I mean, there isn't many, there's not as much homework as there used to be, though.
No, I would agree.
I mean, they're trying to reduce homework to to finish it in school, but
Yep. Couple other things on human services. One thing, they were recently notified by United Healthcare, that typically, they they provide care coordination to the residents of Becker County through their, for, it's primarily senior services. And United Healthcare changed it this year, that you had to submit an RFP to be able to provide care coordination. Becker County provides care coordination for about 400 residents, so it's not a guarantee that they will be able to continue to provide it. They find out, they will find out by the end of the year. I did ask about revenue, because we get paid to provide care coordination, and I believe we had a position that we approved based on that. They they did assure us that they still, there will still, there are other healthcare plans that they can provide care coordination, so it should not affect the budget, but they will continue to keep us informed and let us know. Hopefully, they should know by the end of the year if they can continue that. So, anything else on human services, Richard?
The one thing I wanted to mention, too, in the in the homework, that it mentioned homelessness, and, you know, I think they just changed the definition of homelessness for students
Yeah.
You know, within last couple of years. And it gets to be, I mean, it gets a much broader net is thrown out if you include what they are now including.
Yeah.
You don't have to be currently homeless, you just have to be homeless in the last year, and you, even if you just moved to a
Stayed at grandma and grandpa's.
Friends or relatives would qualify you as a homeless. So I mean, it's like, some of those numbers, I think, are a little bit higher than what they
Yeah.
Mean, really
I, I found that out, too, when I was working at the school, like, we have just any homeless kids?
Yeah.
No, it's, they're staying somewhere.
And it seems like now our society and parents are okay with their kids moving to some other home. I mean, and I'm, you know, when I grew up, that was never heard of, you knew, no matter what your
Unless you get kicked out.
I mean, living with grandma and grandpa, they are still homeless, right? They don't have, they don't have a home, yeah, well, but by definition, yes, but they they don't have a, they have a home to stay in, but they don't have a home necessarily to call their own. But we, Barry and I had benefits committee, just where we reviewed three policies for health insurance. We're looking at an 18 to a 20, 20.4% increase, depending on which company is chosen. Medica, which is the one that we're currently in, they provide an 18% cap on year two, and they are the only company that provided a cap on year two. And I think we meet again end of this month to hopefully make a decision on
I think
What company to go by.
I think we just, Carrie just informed me, too, but we just got an email this morning, because we asked a question about the second place, or the second one, and they had a program that was cheaper, and we'll have, we'll have to look into that. And Carrie said she reviewed it a little bit earlier and said it was, had some promise to be considered, so. If the employees think that plan is acceptable, and and if it's cheaper, then we can possibly look at, look at that as a group, and come back to the board and
And then I had our EDA Housing Subcommittee on Friday. We reviewed the RFP for the work, the project on our Maple Avenue renovation. We made a recommendation for that, as well as we reviewed the MMCDC board contract for our housing services, and both of those will go to the full, full EDA Board this week, and then come to the board for approval. And then I, we also had a EDA Strategic Planning Meeting where we identified areas of need for our EDA. The, really, the two top priorities that we identified were housing and childcare. Business development, while we think it's important, it's tough for us to try to bring new businesses in if we don't have housing and childcare to take care of those employees. So we are going to continue the conversation, we haven't finished it, but we've also discussed collaboration with the smaller cities in Becker County, such as Lake Park, Audubon, Fraser, of what can we do to help guide them through the process of housing. And we just discussed what our role is as far as providing resources, and there was some discussion of TIPS, so.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Jepson, did the Maple Hills Apartments, did that, are the proposals, did they come in on
A little higher.
A little higher than expected.
Mm-hmm, yep. But they should, but the project should be completed yet this year.
Did you have a dollar in mind?
Um
Did you accept it?
I don't think we formally accepted it yet, it has to go through the EDA.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right.
Mr. Noel? As Erica said, we had the benefits committee. I think, I don't think there's anything to add to that. Richard and I had natural resources, if Richard had, I'm looking at the, my notes here, if you want to add in anything, just chime in. Obviously, the Dunton Lock structure is about complete. The watershed building has, we have set removal deadline for April 15, 26, and we're going out for some bids. The Nordic Ski Club was up, was there to talk about, no, that's not on our agenda, is it? So they're requesting us to consider helping them purchase a ski groomer, I mean, a cross-country ski groomer. They want like a, like a piston bully, big, big one to pull their, their, to create the trails. They had a, he, Lynn presented and showed where the funding, their request was 20,000 from the county, I think, wasn't it?
That's right.
And we currently give them 7,500 annually for, that was a five-year agreement that we entered into them, and I think we're on our fourth year maybe of that. Anything to add to that?
They actually want to haul snow, they're gonna, they're gonna make snow, because we've been short of snow. He said we lost a month this summer, I don't know if that's, or a month of winter, I don't know. So they want to haul snow into the trails.
Well, they have a, they have a, they have a spot by Detroit Mountain where they'd have a loop, so they want to, they have a snowmaking machine in the middle, and this is one of the thoughts, and then groom with that snow this, what was it, a mile, mile-long loop or some
Yeah.
So they have for training and exercise, so. Anything to add to the group? So, but anyway, we we looked at it and thought maybe, we said we'd consider options on funding, maybe shorter. We'll, we'll have some discussions probably in our budget hearing a little bit about that. Heartland Trail construction, the Old Highway 10 is finished. We had some parking lot expansion quotes, and our wonderful highway department came in and said they could do it for about $4,900. Looking at the fog sealed on the bike path, and that was 3,400 from Dun, by Dunton Locks. We're doing the trail routing study, and I've received, and I forwarded to Carrie and Steve support from Lake Unis Township, Corman Township, and there's some, some really people are wanting to help support that and get that moving down in that area. So if there's anything that we can need, and Steve, I haven't responded to your email yet, because I'm still gathering some info from a couple people, but, let's see, what else do we have? Seasonal staff, they have a vacancy, would like to fill that with a green space employee, the current, current green, green corps, green space, green corps, sorry. Anything else you want to have anything, Richard? Have the truck, trucks on the agenda, look at, we looked at brushing costs and tractor quotes for moving forward. And we had two gentlemen from the, the tribe, White Earth Tribe Fire Department or Fire Crew, and they, it was really interesting, because they travel. I mean, we, you know, I didn't realize they're forest, forest management, fire, and they travel all over the country.
Yeah, to, to other reservations, and sometimes
Yeah, on non-reservations.
Other fires, too, and they, yeah, that was, that was very interesting. It's, but sounded like a really interesting job, but it didn't sound like you'd be home very often.
No, you have to be very
Yeah.
We did discuss the the future of the ash borer, you know, it's certainly coming into our area, and I think Mitch said we don't have a lot of ash stands that we could manage real well to to help with that, but something that that everyone's got to watch now. One thing that they talked about with, was, that I found the most interesting, was the blueberry burns that they have. So they're burning down old stands of blueberry, and there's, they're gathering those, and then they come, they get rejuvenated and gather, and they said they had, they had a guy that's really the top expert in that, and helping them grow these, so sustainable existence with these blueberry patches that, and I guess that would be existence with these blueberry patches that, and I guess that would be, that was just a real interesting discussion we had then.
Yeah, I agree. I'd never heard of that before.
I also had, anything else to add to that one? Had a Lake Agacy Regional Library meeting just this last week, the, the main topic on that one was discussion, and we agreed on a lease with the city of Moorhead and we agreed for eighteen dollars a square foot. And that includes all, you know, amenities. I, I argued that that was high for a building that was paid for by, you know, taxpayer dollars and through sales tax. We did have a motion to amend that to lower it, Ben Grimsley, and that ended up to, it was a tie vote, so as a tie in an amendment, it fails because you don't have majority, so then it went back to vote for the original and that passed, so. I, I, you know, it's gonna be a, a great fit for both, but I think, I think we are paying a little bit more than we should be paying for that, on that, but we're splitting, at some point, you're splitting hairs on, on what's, what's right and what's wrong and and anyway. Then the only other thing I wanted to discuss was the, was the, and Jim's here and I sent Carrie and Jim an email yesterday. I'm not, not real satisfied with the progress in the Lake Park project on the, on the sidewalks. Our, they have pulled out now and we are sitting with driveways that aren't paved, they're, and the sidewalks are dropping off at those sidewalks, there's no, I mean, and then it turns to gravel. We have the main, on the corner of our main street to going to the school, I got a picture of it, it's a, it's a, no sidewalk, it just drops and there's, you know, it is the, it is the poorest excuse for a sidewalk development in the whole city. It's been terrible and I, Jim, I don't know, I don't know what is in our contract with this company, but it is, it is not good. They left another, ours, Lake Park out, they left Lake Park so they could go do sidewalks in another town because their school is starting, our schools aren't starting? I mean, I got a picture, this is our main street, Jim, and I sent you the picture. It's our main street to our main, to the school. And it's completely not finished. I don't know what, I don't know how you can justify leaving it like that, that was terrible.
Is there intention to come back before school starts, like in the next week or so?
That was, yeah, they said they, it has been kind of a, a challenging job as far as product, project management and keeping everybody on schedule, they have had some legitimate delays due to weather and that and but I, I think maybe it's more work than that they thought it was and turned out to be, but they did, they had, as you know, contractors build, bid multiple jobs and then
That's, this is the sidewalk coming off Main Street, which the bridge, we have one bridge, it comes down here, so anyone walking has to come to this sidewalk to go to school. And we just put a brand-new crossing right across from that so they could get on the sidewalks from the other side of the street to cross to get on this sidewalk. There's not a sidewalk on the opposite side of the street, this is the only sidewalk going to the school and to leave, to leave us like this is not acceptable. This, and, and driveway after driveways and dirt's piled everywhere, cones up everywhere, and it's, it looked like this is a third-world country that we're going through all summer long and now they leave us like this right before school starts? I'm just not satisfied and I, and I want to withhold payments until this job, no, I mean, this, I don't think it's acceptable. So.
Yeah, I, I can't disagree and I did speak with the city council, they shared very similar thoughts and we're putting pressure on where we can. Yeah, we, we don't have any teeth in the contract to say that contractors can't, you know, leave if they have other work or whatever, they, we just have kind of final deadlines. But they are supposed to be back here next week, that's, I'm making, trying to get confirmation on that and hopefully everything's going well at their other job, but that gives them a week to clean up these sidewalk areas and that. In the meantime, we've asked the prime contractor to start cleaning up the streets, we can kind of address these areas. Some of those driveways, you know, we, we've ramped and they have gravel in them and we're gonna have to address, we can fill in areas and ramp up those areas where the sidewalk is missing as well. But our hope is that with, that all the sidewalks will be done before school, otherwise they'll have to do extra work to make sure everything's passable. We do have the teeth of whatever, they, they have to provide this temporary pedestrian route if the sidewalks are closed, so we'll make sure those are up. But yeah, it is a, it has been not a pretty job and
I tell you what, if this was in Detroit Lakes, this room would be full of people. This, this is, I mean, there's people that, that, you know, it's not just kids walking. You're talking about parents with younger kids in strollers and trying to navigate these streets, it's been, I mean, this just, I mean, they go from one side of the street to the other side of the street, I mean, all summer long, it's been a hodgepodge, it seems like there's no, there's no direction. It's, I, it just, you just go and you keep mind-boggling, our legion has canceled lunches or suppers at night because it, it's just they just can't, people can't get to the buildings, so. I just, I, you tell them that the, I would hope that the board supports withholding any payments to them till, till we get a resolve on this and I, I just, I just think this is, I mean, you kind of tolerate it, you tolerate it, now it's like, we're at school time and now we're here? It's just not acceptable, in my opinion. So, I said my piece. I hope we, I will, hope we withhold payments and make sure we get a product and then, I mean, I think there should be some penalty for, for this job done.
So I was saying too, if we're spending resources and time in, in making it temporary so people can actually drive over it to their driveway, they should be charged for that, I would think, I mean, that should be a deduction of how much we pay them, we had to pay for that.
Jim, we've already got a contract, it already says what it says, doesn't it, I mean, we can't change something now about the contract, right?
No, we just hold them to the contract, make sure they have to do a little of this extra work though to maintain access and stuff like that.
If we feel they're not doing the access, I mean, where do you see the access point going to? Where, where can you see access going on that, on that picture? They're not doing their job, there's no access to that sidewalk. You can't, this broke up after the side, we can't get to the road if you're in a wheelchair or stroller without going through gravel pit. So. I, thank you, thank you, Jim. And I know, and I know Jim is Jim's probably too nice for some of this, you need we need guys like Richard on it.
Thanks, Barry.
Mr. Chair, switching gears and to get Jim off the hot seat here, Commissioner Nelson, concerning the, the Dunlops Trail Study, just so everybody knows, I mean, there's three alternative routes, from Dunlops back up to County six, down Highway fifty-nine, or down County twenty-two, or the one we'd really like is through WeFest somewhere, but I talked to Houston Engineering yesterday and, and I think their desired route is along Highway fifty-nine. That may be the path of least resistance, but I think going through WeFest is going to be a much better path, and if they do go along Highway fifty-nine, Dunlops is going to be a stub. And I really, I mean, we've got a lot of money into that place out there, it's a beautiful place. I, I, I've talked to the engineer and everyone and did my comments about trying to get through WeFest there, and WeFest is receptive. I've heard both that it can be a public trail and go through WeFest and it can't be a public trail if WeFest wants to shut it off for three or four days during WeFest, so. I cannot be there on Monday, I've got another previous obligation, but if somebody can be at the pavilion on Monday night, I know our rack committee will be there, if you can be there, more support the better for, for Houston Engineering. And I just wanted to point out that I, I don't want Dunlops to become a stub, it's too beautiful of an area to not pass through as people go down Highway fifty-nine and don't go to Dunlops.
Well, when you, when you make these bike trails, I mean, I can't imagine that if it's along a major highway, it's going to be as attractive to go to as if it's, you know, through some forested or, you know. You're gonna try to find those areas that are more natural and enjoyable to view when you're biking, unless you're just out there for racing.
But Houston's got a contract and I, I think their path of least resistance is, is the best way, they're saying, because it's the least amount of work and I just in, in this respect, I think we should I think they should exhaust all WeFest routes before we go Highway fifty-nine, if we have to do Highway fifty-nine, then that's it, I guess, but I'd like to see them work a little harder at it, getting through WeFest, because WeFest is receptive. They said, yeah, what's your plan or how does that work, and, and they've got some restrictions with, with WeFest and I don't know about this public, bike trails have to be open all the time because it's public? Or if you can shut them down a couple of days so they can do their event, I don't know how all that works, but I, I've tried to get some answers, I don't even know who to ask who can answer that question, so.
What would the bike trail need to be shut down during WeFest?
Yeah, that's what they've said, yeah.
Yeah, that's the problem, you can't shut down this trail.
Well, I mean, I
Because you have puzzle, public funds to support it.
I mean, I, I don't, I, I guess if we, it's WeFest property, so, but the way they, the way they check bracelets, I mean, you can't, I mean, you can come and go from the lake access, I, I mean, you can get to the WeFest campground without without going through gates, you can just be dropped off there, so, I mean, you're not, it wouldn't be adding any access, I mean, more than what you could already do already, I wouldn't think, but I guess that's their decision, I mean, I can understand it if they don't want that going through there, but.
Anyway, just wanted to bring that up.
Thanks, Jim.
The only other meeting I went to was the one for you.
Yeah, the Partnership for Health.
And I get my minutes here, but the only thing, you know, there was, there's a couple of things, Partnership for Health is obviously going through a change with Otter Tail leaving Partnership for Health.
And Wilkin too.
So that will be a change. One thing the Clay County Director made a mistake at our, for funding in that one, for the, for a funding grant. And it was, wasn't a mistake, we could do what we did, but they wanted to go back to the kind of the previous year's funding formula, which we, we received then two thousand dollars less than what we, what the, your board, what you guys approved the meeting before. Wilkin County got sixteen thousand dollars less, which was significant, but still they received a nine thousand dollar increase from the previous year. So they, they were, we were kind of joking that they they agreed though, we want to continue with the previous formula funding mechanism rather than changing it, so, and that was what was intended, but it wasn't presented that way. So, other than that, there was
All right, Richard, you have?
Yeah, the only other thing I got is Safety Committee. We're working on a new emergency action plan, that's fire, lockdown, weather, drills and locations where people would gather. We did have facility walkthrough by a company called Safeishure. And they went through all of our buildings, should OSHA ever come here, they, they come through and show us what we're, what, what's wrong and we, we had some small things, nothing serious, but but some small things that we had to change. You know, maybe garbage can in front of a fire extinguisher, some of this kind of stuff, so. But actually, we're, we're correcting all that stuff now and we should be in good shape for, if OSHA was to
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Verber, was that for the entire, all of our facilities or just for this building?
No, all of them.
All of them, okay, good.
So, that's all I got.
Okay, I have a couple, I'll just go quick here. So I had a Historical Society meeting and they, we are, the Historical Society is actually requiring, they weren't going to have an exhibit over the winter, they're in the fall and winter this year, but they this kind of fell into their lap, it's a Butterfly Odyssey exhibit. And they have no place for it to go, so instead of paying storage, they basically, maybe we were paying a minimal fee, like a fifth of what it would cost. I mean, it's like a hundred thousand dollar exhibit and I think we're getting it for five thousand bucks, so. And it's gonna be there
Less than a fifth.
He's not a mathematician.
Whatever. Less than a fifth. You probably know a lot about fifth. So anyway, so this exhibit will be there in October and there's also, they're also trying, they also haven't found any place to go for, go, go for the rest of the winter, it'll be from October to January. So it probably will be there till March because they would rather not pay storage and have us keep it. So, and anyway, a Butterfly Odyssey exhibit is like interactive maze where you can, you can go through the life, so to see the life cycles of both wild and farm butterflies and you can, you can crawl on it, you can climb through it, you can go through like a tunnel that looks like a worm, I mean, there's, it's kind of cool. Yeah, I know, it's for science nerds, I get it.
Oh, well, I'm just thinking, I'm picturing you crawling.
Oh, it's about this bigger hole, you're good. So anyway, and it's, and it talks about the life cycle, it shows all the life cycles of butterflies and it also talks about how butterflies are crucially important for rain, for rainforest areas and, and, and so it's ecosystems and it's really good, so, anyway. Also, I had a DAC Building Meeting and we talked about what we want to possibly have our building addition look like, so we kind of changed gears from before and we're looking at expanding to the east into that bigger lot area. So they're gonna, we're gonna have the architect come and obviously, a lot of it will depend on the price, if it's, if it's possible. I also had a Lakes Country Service Co-op meeting and we met at the Lakes Country Academy in Fergus Falls and that academy is, is basically a level four EBD place for kids. But anyway, that academy building used to be the old Armory, National Guard Armory. So it's very interesting how it's set up, there, there was a shooting range in there too, so the walls are like, like concrete, like two feet thick in the shooting area and it was kind, and the hallway's really narrow because it was, and they made rooms obviously in there, but it was just kind of interesting how it is and they have, they've made, all of the rooms in this building were made small because when you have level four EBD kids, you don't want a lot of them in a room at a time. Because the smaller the better, so, it's really kind of cool, then they have, then they have, and all Armories that were created have gymnasiums, so they have a gymnasium slash eating area that, for, for, for the people that are there, so anyway, it was just really interesting. They also are having the same issues that we're having with insurance, because they're, they're an insurance provider and they're looking at eighteen to twenty-two percent, some, some more, depending upon usage at some of their places, so yeah. I think the lowest one was eighteen, I think, so it's, so it's an issue. Also, I had a Dancing Sky Meeting. Basically, all we did, we went through all of the grant applications for twenty-twenty-six and we approved, approved them and, and they're not made public yet, so I can't tell you what we did. But anyway, just, just, but, so that'll be through and then, Richard and I had, actually had a week, we, Richard, Carrie and I had a week committee meeting, I just thought of that. So, there are just a few things, we, we was with Chairman Fairbanks, Hanks and Lorley, yeah. It went really well, I mean, it was great, they, they would like to have more voting pop-up sites, obviously, Barry. They also would like to have some of their people trained to run those sites. I mean, that's, that's, it, I, it makes sense to me, I, I mean, I get it. Then they'd like, maybe, maybe just a couple more days, they thought to make it easier, they, they want their people to vote, that's their number one concern, I think. And then also, they are building, what was it, eight tiny homes? Dynamic homes, I think it was eight.
Yeah, I can't remember the number.
I think they've already had some.
Or yeah, they've had some built and they're building they're increasing, I think, I think they're having dynamic homes build, I think they're, they're like sixteen by eighty, so they're when I, I used to live in a sixteen by eighty mobile home, but I don't Yeah, I know.
I lived in a fourteen by fifty mobile home.
Apparently.
One bedroom.
And then it, so anyway, and then also the cell tower on Rat Lake Trail, I believe, but it's one of our things on the agenda.
Are those, are those tiny homes and are they gonna be independently owned or is the tribe gonna own them and just let people stay in?
I think the tribe
I think they're for elders.
Elders.
Yeah, they're for elders, I think the tribe is gonna own them.
The tribe's gonna own them and the elders are gonna live there, that, their, their biggest concern right now, they said, was their, was housing for their elders.
Yeah. I mean, and, and that, that would work for that, but, you know, homeownership is kind of I think the ultimate goal for individuals if they, you know, to
Yeah, they want them to own homes, they want their, yeah, they do. And then all, the, one of the other things we talked about was the Oklahoma DMV, we had some questions on that and they are supposedly working on an arrangement with the state to be able to do, you know, driver's license and tribal licenses in the same place, because that's, that's kind of what their goal, goal is.
So, we just found out that was a tribal request?
No, I don't know if we, did we just find out or I don't know.
Well, I, I don't know that we had it confirmed.
I don't think we had it confirmed.
Till we asked.
Till we asked them, yeah. It was, it was kind of soon, I think we
Well, we were wondering, but they, they wouldn't allow any information about that.
Yeah, the state wouldn't allow any information. Yeah, I don't think the tribe was, I don't think they're kind of keeping it a secret, I don't know. There was anything else, Richard, we did there?
No.
I don't think so.
I, I think the other thing to add on that meeting was, there was a request by them to, you know, the way we have it structured right now with environmental services, where they have representation from the tribe coming, you know, is there any they have representation from the tribe coming, you know, is there any?
Unenvironmental or NRM?
NRM, sorry. You know, other departments where we could, you know, mimic that collaboration in other departments as well with the county. So they did ask.
Did they have any suggestions?
Um, you know, we, they talked about the human services. They brought up public safety. Highway was brought up.
Are, are, I got to ask this. Are we invited to any of their committees and have input on any of theirs?
I don't know that we asked that question.
I mean.
But, but, but we, you're.
We were invited up there.
Yeah, yeah. We were talking about future meetings. I, we didn't ask that specific question, but that's sure, I certainly can.
That's a fair question.
That's a fair question.
I'll, I have another topic that I'll, if we're done with this one?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I actually have no more meetings, so go ahead.
I, I just think that, I think the pub, the public health, I think when we transition, I think we could have two commissioners on that. Every other county had two commissioners there.
We, we talked about that, so, we talked, they're going to, we're going to have a meeting also to determine that, but we, we talked.
But I mean, I think we should have two representatives.
Yes, we, we, I think, I think we decided that we need two from Clay and two from Becker.
True.
Because right now, we have one and an alternate, and we.
Everyone brought alternates to the meeting.
Yeah.
And Denise wasn't at that meeting, Amanda was, but I was hoping Denise would be at that meeting as we're transitioning, especially when it's held in Becker County.
Yeah. Yeah, I, but I, I agree. We should have two commissioners that go to those meetings.
When we get to appointments, should we consider that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Are we at appointments?
We're at appointments right now, unless anybody else.
Are you interested? I, I think you would be the natural fit.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So you want to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we, we add Erica as the second commissioner and for, with, to Partnership for Health, for those previous reasons stated.
Do we, do we want to, do we want to add it immediately?
I would.
The, the only thing is, is, well, I could be the alternative.
He made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have, we have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second. No, I can take, thank you. So, so discussion.
What I, my motion was, was just for you to attend meetings. If, if your organization makes it a voting member, then that wouldn't change anything.
Yes, currently, there right now, it wouldn't be.
You would be an alternate.
But when we switch over, it.
You would have voting rights.
Okay, so that's what I was going to say.
I was just making a motion for you to get a per diem and, and.
Yeah.
And your bylaws in that meeting would change.
Yes.
Make you a voting.
Correct. All right, so we have a motion, a second. Do we have any more discussion?
The only other discussion, then, if, if one of you can't make a meeting, you can choose one of us to go to that.
Yeah.
As your alternate, and then we would also have voting, and we're, if we're taking your spot, we have voting rights. If you go as an alternate, you don't have voting rights.
Yeah, correct.
Till their bylaws change.
Yeah.
Tim.
All right, so.
As far as vote, voting rights, we can unilaterally, at this meeting, decide that we have voting rights for an outside organization?
No, 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 their bylaw.
Understanding, there, we are sending two commissioners under, for us, to be able to get per diem and mileage.
Okay.
That's all we're doing. At their meeting, they will have to allow this, the vote. They're changing their, as we transition from when Otter Tail and Wilkin are leaving, so their voting will change. They want two commissioners to have voting rights from each county rather than one. So.
That'll, that'll, that'll be changed after this.
After the first, first of the year.
It'll be.
When Wilkin and Otter Tail leave.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be done before that, but it'll be changed officially on January 1st, yeah. All right, so we have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, let's go move on to, or do we have any other appointments? All right, let's move on to our county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to go back to the Safe-ishure that Commissioner Verberg had talked about. The last walkthrough that we did was 2023, so this was overdue, and we do have the reports, and there's work being done on making those corrections with the departments, along with a facilities manager as well. So he's been involved with that process as well. Do you have a question?
Mr. Chair, could we maybe do the proposed DNR land acquisition? We have a public hearing at 9:30 that we should probably do.
Yeah, we do have a public hearing at 9:30. So let's go, let's move down to.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no, I agree. We're, move down to number two.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Good morning, Chair Meyer and Commissioners. I am Nick Banks with the Trust of Public Land. I have with me Eric Thorson, the Area Wildlife Manager from the DNR. We're here just to present some information about the proposed land acquisition that we're seeking approval via resolution from the Commissioners on. Last time we were in front of you, or I was in front of you, was last fall, when we were looking at acquisition of Toad Mountain as a potential regional park. We've since worked with the seller after that to try and to continue to preserve the property while opening up to the, the public to enjoy and experience, and went and had communications with the DNR about possible interest in this as a wildlife management area, and they were interested in taking the property on as a, as a wildlife management area and adding it to the portfolio of their lands that they manage in Becker County. I think you have a map in front of you of the acquisition.
Yep.
It is a little bit different than what you saw the first time we were here. We're looking to acquire out of the 253 acres, 250 acres. So we're cutting out about three acres, which is essentially constitutes the cabins and the garage that are in the lakeside, part of the property east of, I think it's Toad Lake Drive. And so essentially, that infrastructure that's there and that red exclusion area is cut out from the acquisition. But we would be acquiring the, the remainder of the property, including some of that sensitive lakeshore that you can see jutting out in the peninsula there that's not developable currently. The, I'll let Eric speak to the, the uses of the property as a wildlife management area, but generally, it would be open for use to the public for things like hiking, hunting, wildlife observation, things of that nature, but not things like camping, horseback riding. Eric, maybe correct me if I'm wrong there.
Yeah, would also be open for trapping, fishing from the shoreline, and just access, you know, to, to those lands. There's quite a network of trails there from the existing landowners already, and we would intend to maintain those trails as hunter-walking trails, which are multi-use trails that could be used in the summer or the winter, and so there's.
Excuse me, did you say hunting trails?
Hunter-walking trails. So that's a fairly common thing, and like the Smoky Hills State Forest, Two Inlet State Forest, we maintain hunter-walking trails on state forest lands, and we also do it on, on wildlife management areas. So those are, information on those are on our, DNR website, and we try to maintain those annually with mowing and trail clearing.
And those would also help for things like management of the property long-term, too, as well as just access for the public. One other thing to note, just to bring to the, the public record is, there will be, when we purchase this and sell it to the DNR, there will be payment in lieu of taxes on this parcel, and based off of the, the assessed and the appraised value, the, the PIL payment in 2026 would be nearly double what the current tax revenue is from 2025. So last year, in 2025, the property tax was just over 600 and, $6,900. The estimated PIL payment would be just below $12,500. If Commissioners have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Does anybody have any questions for them?
I don't have any questions, but I do just want to note that Eric and I did tend the Toad Lake Township, as Clark had noted in the open forum, and there was, you know, a couple of the people that were there that had previously been opposed to, to it, and when the county was considering acquiring it. But everybody at that meeting was in support of it, including former Commissioner Larry Knutson was also there. But they did agree that this was a good, a good next step for the mountain, so.
Mr. Chair, I sat through some of those meetings in the fall, just kind of roughly paying attention before I became Commissioner. I know it was contentious. Can you bring me up to speed of why were the residents so adamant at not, at this not being a county property?
Because they did not want the county, they believed it would cost the county too much money between purchasing it and maintaining it.
Okay, but you said now the residents around there are more receptive, the township is receptive because it's going to be a DNR property?
I think one of them was loss of revenue for the, tax revenue for the township, and with the PIL payments, now that won't be a loss. It'll actually be an increase, at least in the short term. And the other, the other thing was, I think there's more limited recreation activities on the DNR land than there is on the, what the county, what the county could have done, because there was a lot of talk about campgrounds, camping, and that's, and horseback, you know, there's actually some horse-riding facilities, and that was, that's not part of the DNR's plan. So, less, less things to do.
Mr. Chair, Eric, if this goes forward, what will the relationship be, or what do you anticipate the relationship will be with the county and the DNR concerning that property?
We'd certainly take input, you know, if there's some desires for, you know, facility development on the property or different uses, so it can be involved in the planning and for the management of the unit. But generally, we would have pretty limited facilities, probably a parking lot on, on the east and the west side to help the public access the property, and have gated trails to keep, you know, ATVs and other motorized vehicles off of the trails, so they're open for, for walking. Certainly can have some input on, you know, vegetation management plan for the unit. There, it would be available for timber harvest, probably be a limited amount of that that goes forward, but through the state planning system, and done in a sustainable manner. But certainly would take input on the planning going forward on that, this new WMA that's proposed.
The one thing I would like, like to see is up on top, not a, not a dwell, or not a structure to, you know, to cover, but just a photographic opportunity, because that is such a unique spot up there to, I mean, I, I can see, you know, high school pictures or, or, you know, engagement pictures being, being, it's just a nice setting for, and have some sort of archway to, to just capture that and visit Becker County, you know, hashtag up there or something.
Yeah, certainly could look into an observation platform.
Yeah.
Or something like that, yeah.
That'd be a good term for it, observation platform.
Mr. Chair, Eric, so you were saying it fast. You said that no camping, no horseback. I mean, there was horseback facilities, there are some old buildings and stuff where they had it. That, that would, there would be none of that.
That area would be cleaned up, so it would be restored back to natural habitats there. So that, you know, beside cleanup related to those structures there at the kind of base of the mountain.
So, so you had said hunting and hiking on there would be the?
Yep, hunting, trapping primarily, you know, hiking, cross-country skiing, you know, you know, wildlife observation, trapping, fishing, you know, all of that is basically any form of non-motorized outdoor recreation.
Are e-bikes allowed?
That's a gray area, I think. So, I think the state is working through that, you know, how you define what a motorized bike is, so.
Mr. Chair, Eric, where is the next nearest facility within Becker, within the region where these activities you'd be able to do?
Probably the closest one will be the Hubble Pond WMA, which is right on State Highway 34, next to Tamarack Refuge. We don't have any WMAs in the eastern half of the county, so this would be a unique kind of management unit for the eastern half of the county. So that's the area that is managed out of the Park Rapids work area, the western half of the county is managed out of Detroit Lakes Wildlife Work Area. So this would be our first wildlife management area in the eastern half of the county.
Does anybody else have any, any more questions for Eric, or?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve Resolution 08252D.
We have a motion for 2D. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Erica, motion by Barry. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, motion carries. All right.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Thanks, Jase.
Let's, so Kerry, we're going to move on to the public hearing, go back, and then we'll come back to you. All right. All right, so we are now, I got to get my page here. 65.
Thanks, Jase.
Are you making a motion?
Yes. I need a motion to, I'll entertain a motion to have a public hearing for the reclassification of part of parcel 09.7154.000.
So moved.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
So the public hearing is open?
The public hearing is now open.
Everyone, we, that, my motion was everyone except Jerry.
He got his car stuck on another trail, anyway. I said that. All right.
Are you going to ask if anyone wants?
Yeah, is there anybody here that would like to speak towards the reclassification of part, part of the parcel?
Is that Toad Hill?
No.
No.
It's Rat Lake Trail.
It's Rat Lake Trail. All right, so I'll ask again, is there anybody that would like to speak to the?
Mr. Chair, could you, Mary, just give a little update on what, what is, why we're doing this?
Great. Okay, so basically, what we're doing is we're going to split off two and a half acres of land for a cell tower on the north side of Rat Lake Trail to provide cell service east of town. This property actually has been forfeited since the 40s. It was put into conservation in, I think it was the 50s, and basically, it takes a public hearing to remove land from conservation. Currently, it's just considered part of our natural forest. The two and a half acres of land would then be leased to the tower company. The county has to purchase the property from the state in order to do the lease. So that's the.
And, Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, but we brought this, this was discussed at NRM, and the tribe actually was, was very supportive.
Yeah, they are very supportive, yes.
Yep. We have state approval, we have township approval, and tribal.
Yeah, they have a cell tower by, by Nada Wash, and they're, they're looking super crazy forward to having some more service out there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the way to put it. All right, so I will, we have no, no more, any more comment? I will make him, I need, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I'll make the motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so motion by me, second by Erica. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, now we got to go, now we'll move down to Resolution 08252A, which is the resolution for reclassifying the parcel. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2A.
So moved.
Motion by Erica, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Phil. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, you bet. Thanks, Mary. All right, back, let's go back to Kerry's finishing her report.
Back to our regular scheduled programming.
I tried to remember where I left off. I was talking about Safe-ishure, and the last walkthrough was 2023, so we'll continue to work with department heads and facility manager to make some notes and do some corrections. So that is in process, and my hope would be in 30 days, we'll have a, a good update on those, on those reports. I met, or actually, there's a meeting scheduled with myself and Human Services, County Attorney, and Court Administration to review what, or, and/or how we could potentially get reimbursed for our CHIPS petitions that we pay retainers on. There's a 4000 funding that's available. We just don't know the amount, and so we're just reviewing the process, and that's something that Commissioner Jepson had asked about. So that is in process. We did meet yesterday for our first round of negotiations with our elected officials here at the county, and as well as one of our appointed officials as well, to look at negotiations for salaries for 2026. I've continued to meet with tribal officials and Menomon County Administrator just on any, to better the communication, as well as if there's any joint collaboration or efforts that need to move forward. I also last, I believe it was last week, I met with two of the court judges, along with Steve Scoog and probation, to start talking about staffing for better futures and to utilize those individuals that are out on probation to bring, you know, awareness to the option and, and really their function within the county and the staffing. And the hopes is to increase the staffing for better futures. That's that matriciding recycling that is done in the county, as well as hoping in the future with the new program for early, not early release, pre-sentencing release of inmates, to see also if that's a pool of individuals that also can be tapped into as well for, you know, a paid job. A lot of those individuals struggle with the housing, and then also with having the criminal background, so this may be option. And we got positive feedback from the judges, they were quite, and probation, they were quite excited about, you know, looking at moving, moving this forward. Also met, I know there was some prior discussion prior to us getting started today about blight properties. There was an internal meeting in really just trying to look at an approach to those properties and, you know, collaborative at an approach to those properties and, you know, collaborative effort, uh, really between, you know, whom, Human Services, Law Enforcement, Environmental Services and Planning and Zoning. Um, several properties that have come to probably some of your attention as well as staff's attention were talked about and really, I would say the consensus was is that, you know, they're similar but yet they're quite different circumstances. So probably can't come up with a blanket policy to address all of them the same, but having those discussions and coming up with next steps of how to, uh, address those, so that is in progress as well. Uh, interesting, I got some information just across counties, I know we've talked quite a bit about, uh, paid family leave and that this board did approve us going with a, the private company MetLife and it's, I, I don't know that I've seen anybody going with the state plan, uh, counties, which I thought was interesting, I think the majority are going with a private company.
Interesting.
Yeah, so there was some discussion with, yeah.
Are they gonna fund four hundred employees or?
So I, I just found that interesting, I, I think the majority of the counties are going, going private, so. Um, and then I had one point of clarification just regarding, um, the homework starts, we talked about the funding, it isn't, we are not a pass-through.
Oh, okay.
The grant is managed outside.
You just make referrals?
Yes, we're just, uh, collaborating, uh, party and, and, uh, resource for them, I just wanted to clarify.
Gotcha, thank you.
So, um, and I think that's all I have.
Mr. Chair, Kerry, we had talked about that AMC leading on purpose, that A Week thing with, with, uh, Julie Ring had sent that out, did you guys all get that?
Yes.
Okay, what, do, is that something we wanna do, we want someone to do or what, what? I was hoping to have a, a conversation on that.
Sorry, I forgot to bring that up. So I did, the information that I did get, uh, basically it is a, was a National Leadership Academy that was, I think, in the past probably provided by NACO, so the state of Minnesota is really kind of mimicking that model, so it is, I believe, eight weeks, um, weekly online meetings and then, um, you're broken into, as I understand it, again, it's kind of a work in progress, uh, smaller groups, um, there's discussion points, probably, I don't wanna say homework, but maybe homework in between, uh, the meetings.
I think Richard should be doing it.
Barry, what have these things been like in the past or what have they?
I mean, I'm, I haven't been one like this, but, uh, I remember Jerry and I went to a leadership training up and, uh, I, that AMC put on, I, I thought it was really good, I'm not interested in, in this one, I, but, I mean, that was, was it like a two-day meeting, I mean, they brought in a, a really good speaker, I mean, and, and, I mean, you will, it, I don't know if you gain anything in long-term from it, but I thought it was really a good, good meeting at the time. Um, I did have a flat tire and Jerry drove by me and didn't help me, but.
Well, and I, and I don't.
He did stop.
I, I think it's, uh, important to note that I think this, as I understand this training, it's more of an interactive, practical versus, you know, having an instructor.
It is, there is a cost to it, as I was, they.
Yes, there's a.
It's five hundred bucks.
Yes, the, I think they said the other cost when they did.
Is it all virtual?
It is all virtual, I did, I did confirm that.
It's all virtual and?
Starts in October.
Yeah, it starts.
Does anybody have an interest in doing it? Barry, you said you don't, Erica?
Um, I would have to look at the dates.
Yeah, I, same here, Richard, would you have an interest in something?
I've been told that I'm not trainable, so I'd waste the money.
I, I, I'd have to know when the dates are and when the meetings are before I can commit, because I, I've looked, there's this, there's no, I see the schedule here, but there's no.
Starts, yeah, October twentieth, but, um, as I, the last information that I had is that they were looking at doing weekly from that point going forward.
That, that's, that's what I.
I mean, I think, I think it would really be, if someone's looking at advancing in AMC also, I mean, if you, if you wanna be more involved with the AMC, I think would be valuable, um, so, I mean, I guess if, if, if someone's interested in attending those, I think the county would support that or I would support that through the county.
The, it doesn't, there wasn't a registration deadline, no, I didn't see.
Because I tell you, the, the more involved you, I mean, it's like we were gonna discuss a, a joint meeting or a meeting with, uh, um, Michelle Fishbach's assistant, you know, we were talking, we should, because those relationships do help, I mean, anytime and in this, this could, this could bring, you know, networking to whomever goes to it and, and collaboration, so I mean, I'm, I, if someone wants to do it, I, I certainly will support it, I'm, it didn't.
Oh, Mr. Chair, and Kerry, I think there's three of us that are interested, but we need more information about, about the virtual times, I guess, so if we could get that, that would, and then I.
And I don't, I don't know if they've set them, but I can certainly.
Matt, I believe Matt Cassidy's number's on here, yeah, he, there it is, yeah, he's, he's the reach out, he's the contact, I may have called Julie too.
Yeah, and I did have a call with, uh, there were AMC members on their own last Friday, as of last Friday, they did not have the dates confirmed.
Okay.
And, and maybe they're waiting for interest, I mean, but it's kind of reversed, so people maybe wanna, I can certainly, um, ask again.
But those times, I, I said, you said they said weekly, certain October.
An hour weekly virtual is what I was being told.
Hour weekly virtual, October twentieth, I believe it is.
If it overlaps with another scheduled meeting, I wouldn't be able to do it, so.
Yeah, that's the problem, yeah.
If you could get some more information maybe and then.
Well, and I, I should maybe say too that, again, this is my understanding as of Friday, um, because it's not the whole group, you know, they break you into smaller groups, so it may, as I understood it, perhaps you would have the consensus of the small group of how to set your own schedule and times.
And there's not many meetings that you can't change the time of other, other meetings, I mean, your county meetings.
So that may give more, yeah, flexibility.
Um, Mr. Chair, it, would it be appropriate to authorize, um, a member to, any member, any commissioner that wants to attend these to pay the registration fee and if, if, if Kerry, if authorize Kerry to, or authorize her to approve that?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Yep, all right, so we have a motion and a second, we have any more discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, with that, you'd have a per diem?
Per diem, I was just gonna.
With that, but I, with no, with no travel.
With no travels, that would be my next, so that's okay with both of you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Yeah, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Then as a reminder, um, the policy conference is, uh, in September, so please let Peggy know so she can get rooms if you are going and for her to register.
I think MRC is on Wednesday night.
MRC is on Wednesday.
I believe it is.
So, could I, I just, Peggy, I just want a room for Wednesday night, not Thursday.
Okay.
The conference ends Friday.
It does.
Correct, and I, I've already, I've already got.
You've already communicated, okay.
Yeah, I've already got.
I think I might have too.
You already got your room?
Yeah, you, like, two months ago.
Yeah, you did. Oh.
I think you might have got my room too.
Did you already get, I thought you already got it.
Oh, I already did, you're right.
She just asked me to remind you, she must have forgot you did it, okay, we probably are ahead, we're probably ahead of this, so.
You're right, never mind, this is good.
Mr. Chair, uh, Barry brought it up, uh, the, the Michelle Fishbach, we all got that email.
Or those, some of us got.
The only important ones that.
I think we should at least respond as a group or, or do something, I, I don't know what that answer is, you, you're talking about connections and just invite them in or, I mean, I, I don't know what to do, but we should do something.
Well, see what works for, for his schedule and say, you know, we, we are, we are excited to, to meet and, and, um, I think it would be a good group, group meeting, you know, 'cause it may be an informal group.
Maybe an informal work session if we can get something scheduled with the board and just have that discussion, I could certainly try to coordinate that, yep.
Okay.
At, but we need enough lead, lead time to, to, um, make it a public meeting if we're all gonna be there.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct.
I mean, I, you know, maybe just more informal too, maybe just go out, I, instead of a, you know, work session here, just go out for, you know, 'cause he even stated in there that maybe just go out for, you know, bite deed or coffee or something.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Okay.
I think those informal settings are sometimes nicer to get out of.
Out of the setting, okay, I will reach out and, uh, you did forward me the email, so I will reach out and see what they have available.
But whatever works, I mean, could meet here for forty-five minutes.
All right.
Okay, I will follow you with that.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Okay, all right, so let's move on to our land use and environmental services, Steve and Mitch.
Who's Stephen? Stephen Mitch.
That's Steve and that's Mitch.
Stephen.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
And Mitch.
Thanks, Stephen. Mitch?
Barry's all excited 'cause he got the email and I didn't.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners, Kerry, Peggy. Uh, before you, there's a request to purchase a half-ton pickup for NRM Department. Um, my request, this is an updated quote prices as requested from Finance Committee. Um, the total cost is, from what I can tell, it has everything built into it that we would request or need for like a steel skid plate, um, bed liner, et cetera, and also has in there others, there's a rebate or incentive with that, that deal, so obviously the, the lowest quote is, um, from Steel and Park Rapids with that seventy-two fifty rebate. Um, my request is up to purchase, up to fifty thousand dollars, um, doesn't need to be that, can be lower, I just wanna make sure with registration and all that other costs that get built into that, um, I have enough budgeted or enough approval for that, so.
Yeah, I think this came, uh, this was a no-brainer when you see the crew cab compared to a double cab, crew cab's much better. Um, obviously the Z71 package has some underneath skid plates that would be desirable, but I think you can, if you need those, you can probably get those added on afterwards.
Mr. Chair, Mitch, the, this seems like kind of a surprise out of nowhere, I wasn't expecting this, is what, what happened, did we, are we replacing a pickup? Are we buying another one or?
The county board has already approved to dispose of the twenty sixteen old truck we have, so once, get this going, put that on auction block or wherever public surplus, so, dispose of that.
Okay.
So, no additions, just replacing one.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Up to fifty, with the preference of the low quote.
Okay, they're good. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, we have any more discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one more thing here, it's just a timber sale contract, informal, that if I could have Kerry and, and the chair sign.
Was that in consent?
That was in the consent.
Okay.
Yep. All right, let's move on to highway with Jim.
Now, Commissioners, I have one item for your consideration today, it's a purchase request for some software, uh, for us to use in our, our work management of maintenance activities, uh, equipment and things. Um, we didn't get to talk one-on-one personally with our highway department, but we did, our committee, but we did communicate, uh, through emails. Um, this had kind of come up, uh, recently, uh, we had been in the market for do, getting some sort of organization to our, 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 um, you know, complaints with citizen or road issues to help us, uh, track the work that's going on and making sure it's completed and then having it all documented, so, you know, if, should we ever have a accident or somebody has a request that shows that we had followed through with it and that. Um, but we looked at this, uh, particular company, uh, we thought it provided the best value, uh, we did look at another company that had it more packages, more geared towards, you know, had some asset management of road pavements and signs and stuff, we already have that. But basically what this does, it's a, it's a geographically based, uh, software that, uh, we can input our work requests or work orders, um, based on location, uh, it's unlimited seats, so all our employees can use it, so if there's a maintenance worker or myself or anybody out there that sees an issue that needs to be addressed on the road, they can quickly enter it with a tablet or a, their phone and that, and it's documented, then it's created into a work order, then it's tracked until it's completed. And I said also, there's a, uh, a customer request module to this where if we get calls on road issues, um, down trees, deer kills, potholes or anything, you know, customers can, instead of calling us up and, and trying to reach the right person to get that, uh, answered, they could go right online and fill this out and then that work order is recorded, uh, then when we go and follow up with it, uh, when it's finished, we check this finish and then that, uh, president is then informed that the work has been completed. Um, it could work for you too, if you have, uh, requests or receive issues, you could easily do it online and, or, you know, if we have people that come in or call that we're not there, um, a receptionist could even enter it, so it's, it just provides great tracking and then it allows for us to, or Jonah, our superintendent, to kind of layout work for our workers and then they can, instead of Jonah wondering if something's completed by always asking, uh, it can be entered and, and show it up, uh, that it's been, uh, completed anyway.
So, Mr. Chair, Jim, so like if you're out spraying road ditches, let's say, for instance, you don't do that, but let's say you are, and you notice a pothole, you could go into this and you could mark that so you know that that's a pothole that needs to be fixed.
Correct, yeah, yeah. And it's location-based, so like, say during Seal Co., you know, we're all focused on that, we could have some work orders pile up and then we get, we see all these requests or, uh, that show up and then they can look at the map and they can get, guide the work and the most efficiently to complete it or get those priority areas, but I think it's something the department, uh, you know, used to do long ago, but they did it by paper, uh, to create their document trail and we really haven't, what we do now is, you know, we, we put schedules in like our outlook or something, which really isn't built for that, or we have a spreadsheet of, you know, activities that we normally do and we just check off when they're done, but, um, I think it just would help with our overall management of, you know, maintenance issues and, and it can even work for equipment and that, and then it also, you can track inventory with it, so we know, like if we have to clean a culvert or replace it, um, we input, you know, our time and our equipment usage and the, the materials, so we, we have that all documented, so know what each of these events have cost us.
Mr. Chair, uh, Jim, how do you roll this out to the public? How do you let the public know, is that just they call into Pam and you say, hey, go onto this site and, and put it in, the culvert's plugged or something like that?
Yeah, we'll, it'll be set up, it'll be on our, our department's webpage and, you know, we could have it, you know, on the, the homepage, you know, uh, showing that it's a new, uh, area for people to just click on and go to and, you know, fill out a form. I think once people get used to it, it's similar to maybe like what zoning does with addresses being assigned and things like that, you know, they go on and, and sign up to get a, a dress assigned to a new property or whatever. And on finance, we also talked about, there might be other uses for other departments on this, we're gonna kind of explore on it as well.
Mr. Chair, um, Mike, do you think that this will reduce the time put in, I mean, will aid in doing the annual report?
Um, I think maybe it could, uh, we do pretty, uh, we do have our own accounting software, uh, so that, most of that work or work in that annual report is drawn out of that, but this might be a good shortcut for like, you know, for audits and inventory, we could track it through this, um, instead of, um, you know, maybe going out and visi, well, we, we will still have to go and visually inspect to verify, um, you know, product on hand, but it will show us, you know, when our inventory's depleted and when we have to, and go reorder again.
Well, you know, in, in these times when we're trying to cut things, this will be an ongoing expense of four thousand dollars, but I really do trust Jim and the highway department as being very conservative in their spending, so if Jim believes that this will aid us not in customer, only in customer service, but, um, I think there'll be some efficiencies in this also, so I, for that, for the minimal price increase, I think, Jim, if you're sold on it, I.
Well, we, we were happy with the price and, 'cause we did look at others that are over twenty-five thousand dollars and there's a lot of these out there, um, but this, one thing we thought that was neat about this, they kind of look at population base on determining what our subscription is and stuff, you know, it's, obviously if they, they gotta service a, a large city, I'm sure their, their network or software has way more complaints and requests, so it's kind of geared based off of our population and that, so I think that was, makes it attractive too.
And then if we get this done, what was the date, August twenty-ninth, we, they?
Well, they did have a little incentive for us and, um, you know, when we talked to them, I'm sure it's maybe part of the, the sales, you know, they wanna put a carrot out there, we do get half off of our, uh, implementation, uh, that saves us thirteen hundred dollars and, uh, they are providing us with a tablet, then we can give to our, one of our maintenance, uh, lead workers, you know, so he would have something to put his. so he would have something to put his entries into.
Did you coordinate with IT?
We have not discussed with IT, this is web-based through the, the Amazon service. I saw Judy here, but I think that's typically what they do, it won't reside on our network, it'll just be that.
One thing I would like, when you get, when any department has anything, you know, want to propose, I, I would like IT in it early, so.
Sure.
I mean, because they're going to, if, if you're going to ask them now to have a link to those sites, I mean, it will affect IT, but. I'm sure they've been accommodating.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll move to approve the request amount of 5,300 for the iWork work management software, up to $5,300 for this request.
Okay, so we have a, mostly Phil, a second by Richard, do we have any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, Jim, just my fear about this is that it sits on the shelf and doesn't get used. So I, you know, I'd like a follow-up in a year to see how it's, how it's working and how it's being used and, and especially if the citizens can use it and learn to use it and be directed to this, because I, I think this could be super valuable if, if it's used. So, yeah, I didn't know this kind of stuff was out there, so thanks for bringing it forward.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
We have anything else for the good of the order? All right, we are adjourned.
Do we adjourn or do we just, are we in budget, so we keep going?
We adjourned and we're taking a break and then we're coming back.
The budget, the budget session was, the work session is.